All right, you're good to go.
Good morning. Thank you for joining the Boston Zoning Commission Public Hearing, which is being held virtually to ensure the continued safety of the public staff members and the Boston Zoning Commissioners. The open meeting law requires that I notify the public that this virtual meeting is being recorded. Please be advised that an audio and video recording of this meeting is being made. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to have the interpreters introduce themselves.
Good morning, everyone. My name is David Molina, and I will be the Spanish interpreter for this morning's meeting. Buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es David Molina, y voy a ser intérprete de la reunión de esta mañana. Le damos gracias a todos por asistir, y les avisamos que la reunión de hoy va a ser grabada para que lo tengan en consideración. Muchas gracias. Thanks.
Buenjour tout le monde. Good morning, everyone. My name is Jardine, and I'll be your Haitian Creole interpreter for this morning's meeting. Good morning, everyone. My name is Jardine, and I'll be interpreting to you in English for Haitian Creole. C'est moi qui interprète pour un Creole Haitien, non mais c'est Jardine Jéhov. Merci.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Anilda, and I'll be your Kibera and Creole interpreter for this morning's meeting. Allo, si. Bon dia. My name is Anilda. I'm going to be the interpreter for today during this reunion of the day. We're going to be vintes para que el reunión de comisión de zonamiento de Boston note informa que la reunión debe ser grabado. Obrigada. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Yu. I'll be the Vietnamese interpreter for the meeting this morning. Xin chào mọi người. Tôi tên là Như. Sẽ hỗ trợ thông dịch tiếng Việt cho buổi sáng ngày hôm nay, và để hỗ trợ thông dịch thêm cái việc của trong chọn hình quả địa cầu và chọn ngôn ngữ là tiếng Việt Việt Nam để được hỗ trợ thông dịch. Xin cảm ơn. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Zhong. I will be the Cantonese interpreter for this morning's meeting.
Good morning. My name is Jessie Allen. I will be the Mandarin interpreter for today's meeting. 大家好，我的名字是Jessie Allen. 我将会是你们的国语的翻译。谢谢.
Terrific. The interpretation channels are now open. Jay, back you.
Thank you to all our interpreters. At this point, I'll take a roll call to zoning commissioners. Michael Nichols, present. Michael Demela. Michael Demela.
No, Mike's not going to be here today, Jay. He texted me.
My bad. Nelson Arroyo.
Present.
David Massey.
Present.
Drew Left is a recusal, I believe. Aisha Miller.
Present.
Ricardo Ostrich.
Present.
Navida Burns.
Present.
And Jay Hurley.
Present.
9:00 AM Public Hearing is hearing before the Boston Zoning Commission of Consideration Petitions have approved of a development plan for Phase 1B, 65 Ellery Street, 75 Ellery Street, and 505 Dorchester Ave within Plan Development Area number 144 on the dot South Boston. The hearing was duly advertised May 23, 2024 on the Boston Herald. When the Boston Zoning Commission hearing on petitions, proponents will first present their case and subject to questioning by members of the commission only. We are taking support and opposition at the same time. If you are planning to testify, please take the time to verify that your computer microphone is active. Please click the hand icon on your Zoom control panel. This will signal staff if you would like to speak. When your hand is raised, your hand icon will be blue. If you are calling into the meeting and would like to testify, please dial star nine to raise your hand. When I call for public testimony, a member of the staff will announce your name and allow you to speak. You must unmute your microphone. Your webcam will not be active. Please give your full name, any group affiliation, and announce whether you support or oppose the petition. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes. If necessary, I'll advise you when you have 30 seconds remain. At that time, please summarize your remarks so the meeting can continue and others may be heard. Finding or proponents are allowed a brief five to 10 minute period for rebuttal if they so desire. Please begin the presentation.
Good morning, Chair Hurley and members of the commission. I'm here before you to present the 232 A Street project, the Seventh Amendment to the Hundred Acres Master Plan and the associated development plan within the Hundred Acres. Oh, sorry, that's for the other project I have. Sorry, I'm here for you to present 505 Dorchester Avenue, 65 75 Ellery. And the development plan for Phase 1B of the master plan for the planned development area number 144, 475 to 511 Dorchester Avenue, also known as Core on the Dot, which was approved by this commission in November of last year, along with Phase 1A, 495 Dorchester Avenue, which was approved in February of this year. Located in South Boston on Dorchester Avenue, roughly between Broadway and Andrew Station, 505 Dorchester Avenue, 65 and 75 Ellery Street represents the remaining buildings in Phase 1 of the master plan. The proposed project calls for the construction of three new all-electric Lead Gold certified commercial office lab buildings with active ground floor retail uses. Phase 1B will contain approximately 1.386 million square feet of gross floor area, including approximately 1.32 million square feet of office and lab space, approximately 60,000 square feet of new retail space and below grade parking. Importantly, Phase 1B will also include two new open spaces, one on either side of Ellery, for an acre of new open space in Phase 1 of the overall project. In addition to numerous public realm upgrades to the immediate site, including a new street network, new Blue Bike stations, and approximately 150 new trees, the project will contribute $6,932,500 towards the city or through city-approved in-kind construction towards transportation and resiliency improvements to the area near the project site. I'll now turn to my colleague Michelle Ye, who will take you through the plan and context. John Sizel from the development team will then bring in the presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Michelle Ye, and I'm the BPDA zoning compliance planner assigned to this proposal. Next slide, please. The proposed projects at 65 Ellery, 75 Ellery, and 505 Dorchester Avenue are within the boundaries of Plan Development Area number 144, Core on the Dot, which was approved by the BPDA Board in October 2023, and the zoning commission in December 2023. These projects also fall within Article 25A, the Coastal Flood Resilience Overlay District or Sea Fraud, and these projects also fall within the boundaries of Plan South Boston Dorchester Avenue, which was adopted by the BPDA Board in December 2016. Next slide, please. From plan dot F, somewhere to Core's last phase, Phase 1A, this area was envisioned to have the greatest heightened densities in the plan area. This area was also envisioned to include an overall mix of ground for retail, commercial offices, research and development, civic and cultural uses, and residential. Next slide, please. This proposal is consistent with the use in dimensional regulations of plan dot F and the PDA Master Plan number 144, as it is creating mixed-use commercial offices and research and development buildings with active ground floor uses. This proposal is also providing approximately 1.5 acres of consolidated publicly accessible open space. In regards to transportation, this proposal provides building setbacks to meet both the complete street standards and plot plan dot F street grid. The proposal provides space and payments for three 19-dollar Blue Bike stations. The maximum number of off-street parking spaces allowed by this proposal is compliant with the restricted parking overly district and Boston Transportation Department's maximum parking ratios. And then, as mentioned, these projects will also provide a $5 per square foot of off-site transportation mitigation funds that is consistent with PDA Master Plan number 144. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to the development team to present the project in more detail.
Thank you, Michelle.
Commission Chair Jay and others, thank you and good morning. Again, I feel like I get to give thanks to so many that have helped us through this journey. We've been on this journey now for years, and this really represents a culmination of a lot of hard work. Thanks to Nick Carter and the BPDA staff and the city staff, along with our electeds, and we could not do this without Andrew Square Civic Association and the neighbors of Andrew Square and the greater area of South Boston. We also just appreciate our professional staff. This has been years in the journey, and we're excited to present this final slide deck this morning on the last of the zoning approvals from the commission. So thanks for the time, and with that, I'll hand it over to the team.
Morning, Mr. Commissioner, members of the commission, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mark Rosenstein with Trademark Partners. Back to just quickly remind everyone, and Michelle covered this very well. We originally were before you last year. The colored area in yellow is representing the roughly 20 acres of the BPDA, excuse me, PDA Master Plan. If you recall, next slide, please, that master plan was divided into four phases. Phase 1 was three commercial buildings located at 75, 65 Ellery, and 505 and 495 Dorchester Avenue, highlighted in red here. Within that, next slide, please. If you recall, we came to you at the beginning of this year and carved out Phase 1A. Next slide. Phase 1A was specifically the residential building, and that had to do with the timing for affordable housing tax credit applications. So 495 Dorchester Avenue, including the 94 units of senior affordable housing, was approved previously this year. Phase 1B is what was left of Phase 1 to be approved, and that's what we're before you here today to talk about. Phase 1B includes the three commercial buildings, 75 and 65 Ellery, and 505 Dorchester Avenue, as well as the two open spaces for now named East and West Open Space, Ellery Street, Service Road, and the upgrades to Alger and Street A, Loring Dorchester Avenue. As Michelle mentioned, completely consistent with both the dimensional expectations for the PDA and completely consistent with the use and program we defined in the master plan. So we're essentially here to ask for your support in building out exactly what the master plan called for in Phase 1. The important note, which we'll touch on in mitigation at the end as well, is that the commercial buildings are subsidizing through the linkage program, the affordable housing, and are necessary in order for us to move 495 forward through the affordable housing process. I'm going to turn it over to BK and Rob to let them walk you through the design.
Good morning, Commissioner Hurley and fellow commissioners. I'm BK Bowley, Senior Design Principal, Stantec Architecture, located at 40 Water Street in Boston. As Mark just mentioned, Phase 1B is what we're looking at today. This is also the site of the most contaminated portion of the 21 acres, so it's great that we're taking this on at the very beginning. We're replacing what was a site that you couldn't stand on for more than 10 minutes with asphalt that was capped by core investments, and now we are replacing it with parks and buildings. The other strategy that we had for this entire 21 acres was to start with large open spaces and green spaces because there are none in this area of South Boston. You could see the one on the right-hand side, the north open space, that confluence of D Street and the future realignment of D Street and Dorchester Avenue. And then, as Michelle mentioned, we have one and a half acres of green space in Phase 1B. Before I go to the next slide, I'd just like to note, too, that Ellery Street that runs horizontally across this image marks the location of the historic South Bay shoreline. That has some inspiration for us in our building design, so I wanted to mention that. Next. This is our zoning compliance chart, and as Michelle mentioned, we are exceeding the open space requirement because it's very important to us and the community and to Core Investments. And then, we either meet or exceed the right-of-ways, the street setbacks, the step backs above the podiums, as well as the building heights, sizes, frontage, et cetera. Next. This gives you an image looking from East Park or the edge of Dorchester Avenue into our development. This is the large park on the right-hand side of that is the first-phase building, which is the residential and affordable senior housing building. That building in right in the center is our next building that is going to be coming online, and I'll speak about that and then the other buildings in just a moment. Next. The plan, and Nick had mentioned this, you know, our idea was to bring trees and street improvements all the way along Dorchester Avenue. There are no trees along Dorchester Avenue currently, to organize around open space and then to activate that open space in those streets with retail. So the retail is the light blue color that you see here, and it is wrapping from Dorchester Avenue around the parks onto Ellery Street. We've pushed all of our loading and service either to the backs or the sides of the building so we can have a really activated center, but also, and incredibly important in this area next to Andrew Station, is to get eyes on the street. We wanted to have that sense of safety and activation at the pedestrian level all around this area. Next. The first building that is going to be constructed in Phase 1B is 65 Ellery Street. Now, as I mentioned, there is a historic shoreline. We have two buildings that are actually sitting in the water of that historic shoreline, and then two that are grounded on land. This building is, has a kind of nautical theme and is inspired really by the history of Boston and the tall ships, and in particular, the schooners and the clipper ships. So we wanted a building that you could see from a great distance, was very sculptural, but also hearkened back to the fact that Boston 150 years ago was the leader in technology then as it is now, and Boston had actually set multiple transatlantic speed records for ships that were created in the city of Boston. Next. This is 75 Ellery Street, and it is the lab building that will follow 65. And here we wanted also a water-based theme, and it's based upon the water lily, a regenerative plant. And we wanted something also that was a little bit more playful, enthusiastic, but really steeped in technology as well. All three of these buildings have the highest level of technology. They are all electric, emission-free, passive house buildings with solar panels, green roof terraces, and other features, including high-performance skin that make it really some of the best buildings that will be built in the city of Boston. Next. So 505 Dorchester Avenue runs right along Dorchester Avenue, is only a block away from Andrew Station. So we wanted to have a building here that was grounded in the historic sense of the old warehouses that lined this street, and then rises up from that into something that looks towards the future. You could see at the ground level, it's highly activated with retail wrapping all the way around into that large park that you can see, and then we have complete streets, separated bike lanes, wide sidewalks, and large setbacks. Next. So here, I'm going to turn it over to Rob Adams, our landscape architect with Halverson. Rob?
Thanks, BK. Morning, Commissioner Hurley, fellow commissioners. So Rob Adams with Halverson Landscape Architect. I'm going to step back quite a place before we drill down into the specifics of the open space. I think, wanted to start with this idea of connectivity, right? There is this concept that has been moving forward around the Emerald Bracelet, which is really the opportunity to connect Franklin Park to Pleasure Bay Castle Island. It was an unrealized portion of Olmsted's larger plan, and you can see on the bottom, that area is there in the yellow dotted line. And I think really, while we don't abut this directly, I think it's important, in the connectivity point of view, to talk about the benefits of this project. Right now, one can traverse along Dorchester Avenue. It's marginally accessible, but really what this project is looking to do is improve the quality of these connections. So bike lanes, wide sidewalks, shaded tree-lined sidewalks to battle heat island effect. I think really the sweet spot of this project is kind of the pedestrian infrastructure that the larger master plan, as well as this first phase, is implementing. Next, please. All of this couldn't happen without the interface with the community, with the BPA, BCDC, Urban Design. It's been a real collaborative process. We have and will continue to work with the community. We've had one or two workshops in which we've asked people essentially their hopes and dreams and fears for the open space. There's also Kids Coloring Books is a really robust kind of community event, and we're planning on having another one at the end of the summer as well. And additionally, as more open space comes online, continuing to engage the community, and Core has done an amazing job of that so far with On the Lot project just down the street, and the community has really embraced this project. Next, please. So drilling down into the actual open space and public realm associated with Phase 1. In concept, this could have been a very short presentation because we're living up to all the aspirations of the larger 21 acres. I think we've done a much better job into kind of bringing the vision and the quality of the space. I think actually, BCDC process was really fundamental in that. So you can see on the bottom of the page, Dorchester Avenue runs north-south, Ellery Street in between, Service Road along the backside, and essentially East and West Open Space. We'll probably call them something more clever in the future, but right now, East Open Space is that large kind of community gateway, a big open civic lawn, and then the West Open Space feels a little bit more intimate in its scale to give the spaces some diversity, allowing people to find the kind of moment or the quality of space that they want to utilize. And as BK mentioned, clearly retail, that light blue facing and helping to enliven the open space. Next, please. So specifically, East Open Space, again, this idea of a big, open kind of lungs of the area, worked with the community to understand what kind of program elements they would like to see. So a small play area, a small picnic area, an interactive water feature, a small kind of event space, like if you're going to sign up for Little League or whatever, just a small area to have that kind of event, but really putting those program elements around the edges to keep that big open lawn as the primary focus. Next, please. And you can see, I think, in this slide, this is really the entry off of Dorchester Avenue. And so using found objects, we're going to find a lot of salvage granite on the site, reusing, repurposing that, but really providing that kind of gateway, that threshold, that welcoming element to the community to the east. Next, please. And then, again, the smaller, around the edges, more intimate scale, kind of smaller group gatherings, trying to bring the scale of the space down, kind of contrasting that against the larger open space. Next, please. And then the West Open Space, as I mentioned, feels a little bit more outdoor rooms, more subdivided, more intimate in its scale. It still has a central seating lawn, but trying to use plant material, use overhead shade trees, again, to combat heat island effect to create smaller rooms. Next, please. And so you can see on these next two slides, this idea of movable tables underneath dabbled sunlight, kind of smaller, more intimate spaces in that central garden with boardwalks and rainwater collection. Next, please. And then at the back, having, we have the railroad tracks to the west. We want to capture that great sunlight and that sunset, but also want to create an edge. So you see this layered kind of filtered effect of a berm along that kind of lawn edge, a pergola or shade structure, and then street trees on that service road beyond. Next, please. I think this is really why I started out talking about connections. This is Dorchester Avenue today. Next, please. And you can see, hopefully, the impact that just wider sidewalks, overhead street shade trees, bike facilities, having that front porch, that relationship between the public realm and the retail of the buildings on the left. It's really a remarkable, I think, transformation. And so not only is it making it more accessible, but I think the quality of that kind of connections and those transitions from neighborhood become much more powerful and impactful. Great. I'll turn it over, I think, to Paula here to talk about on the next slide, some of the consistencies with the PDA.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Rob, and Commissioner Hurley and other commissioners. My name is Paula Deveraux. I'm Pierce Howard, and I'm the attorney for the project. And Michelle Ye, both Michelle Ye and Mark Rosenstein did a great job of showing how this project is consistent with not only the PDA Master Plan that you approved in December of 2023, but also with the plans that the city had for the area. Plan dot F, for example. The, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. This is not in the underlying zoning districts here are industrial, so PDAs are allowed, and there is no zoning impacts. There's no underlying zoning restrictions on PDAs. So this is fully permissible under both the master plan and on the underlying zoning. And that's really it. So thank you.
Next slide, please. And then just to wrap it up, community benefits. We spent a lot of time with folks in Andrew Square and along Dorchester Avenue, working through these. I think the two that I would just highlight, BK mentioned earlier, this is one of the most contaminated sites remaining in the city of Boston. So the approval of this project will allow us to do a substantive cleanup and really turn this into a human and livable space from what was a former junkyard and a pretty toxic condition. And then, second, we are in the Coastal Flood Resilience Overlay District. As part of this project, we'll be raising grade across the site and building essentially a dike along the western edge that will not only protect this site from flood and future sea level rise, but also the area immediately east and west of us as water comes down the, what's now the train track line, and then loops around through this portion of the site. So our efforts at coastal resiliency and floodproofing will really benefit the entire neighborhood and the entire district. Among the other, you can see listed here, things like Lead Gold and All Electric. We've worked hard with the BPDA to make sure that the list of community benefits is both supported by the neighborhood and really tries to mitigate the impacts of this project, and really appreciate your time and attention on this matter today. And we'll finish our conclusion and our presentation there.
Thank you, Mark. Can we take the presentation down so we can see the, thank you. Any questions, comments from the commission? Arthur. Jeff, any public testimony?
Yeah, we have a few raised hands, Mr. Chairman. Dave Nagel. Dave, go ahead. Unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm Dave Nagel. I'm here with Linda Zablocke. We had another meeting, so we're sharing a computer. Linda would like to speak.
Good morning, everyone. First, I'd like to thank everybody for being involved with getting this project done. We're all being part of history because the history that was before this was a junkyard, and I was probably the oldest room right now to tell you that when I was a child, my job from spring to fall was to wipe the window sills because you would clear off the rust on the windowsill, and the color of the white rag was now sienna brown, which was in the 77 color crayon box, if you were lucky enough to have that big one. But right now, we are in history of making a contaminated, horrible site into something that is livable and something that will bring everybody in the city of Boston together. This is not just a South Boston project. This is a Boston project, and we all should be proud to be part of this. So I am asking the commission to go forward and approve this. There has been a lot of work. Core has worked diligently with the community. We didn't hear what was here, everything we wanted to hear, but we heard the truth, and that's what I can say. And I'm also going to ask every one of you to come down and invite you to On the Lot. You will be so impressed as to how this is done with family and community. That is the major, that's the major subject of the lot, that everybody be involved, everybody get to meet each other. We're getting back to being neighbors. We're getting back to know who's next to you, who lives near you, have the same type of involvement and enjoyment, and that's what we need. We need this not only in the city, we need this in the country. So I am imploring all of you to please vote in affirmative for the passage of this project going forward. It will be a great improvement, and you'd be proud to have your name on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Dave, are you going to speak, or are you all set?
Sorry, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. Next is Patty McCormick. Patty, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, Patty.
Good morning, Chair Hurley and commissioners. I'm Patty McCormick, Andrew Square resident and Andrew Square Civic Association Vice President. On the dot will clean up and activate the old junkyard that has polluted Andrew Square for decades. It will build affordable housing for our most vulnerable residents, our seniors and veterans, with a focus on future family affordable housing. Bring back jobs to an industrial area that long ago was thriving, well-paying jobs that assure a good future for our young Boston residents and their families. Too many of our young people cannot afford to live in our city, especially in South Boston. The price is outrageous, and On the Dot will help change that narrative. Add affordable retail units, providing an opportunity to local small business, spark economy, and provide much-needed goods and services to the neighborhood. We have no stores around us except for smoke shops and lottery stores. Provide open green space where residents can gather, and very excited about adding 150 trees to the nonexistent tree canopy on Dorchester Ave. The project will put our union-building tradesmen and women to work and address an unhealthy area of our neighborhood that has struggled with crime and addiction for far too many years. I'd just like to thank David Pogarout and Core team, BPDA, BCDC, and Andrew Square residents. The project is transformative, and as Linda mentioned, one we should all be very proud of. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty.
Minor, go ahead.
Thank you, Jeff. Good morning, Chairman Hurley, commissioners. This is Minor Perez, representing Hundreds Union Carpenters, the living world of the city of Boston. We enthusiastically want to go on. We enthusiastically want to go on record on support of this project. And it must be said that kudos to Core Development and uh Joe Sis- Sisery and his team. Uh they did an amazing job uh on the review, accommodating the neighborhood needs and uh a job well done. Um because of that, we are in strong support of this project and we ask with great respect to please consider a vote on the affirmative. Thank you.
Thanks, Minor.
Next is Tom. Tom, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Tom Pecoraro. I'm Business Agent of Ironworkers Local Seven. Uh I'd like to stop by thanking the. The board and Commissioner Jay Hurley on his presentation. Uh it's very informative and um. This uh this project is uh fantastic and it being right in our backyard, uh. Rise heavily in favor of this project, not just as a member of Ironworkers Local Seven, but also as a resident of the city of Boston. Yeah, uh looks great to clean that area up. Um again, rise heavily in favor of this project. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul.
Uh next is Kevin O'Sullivan. Kevin, go ahead.
Hello and good morning, everyone. Uh my name is Kevin O'Sullivan. I'm from Councilor Murphy's office. Uh Councilor Murphy, I believe, is already on the record as supporting this project. But Councilor Murphy wanted to make sure uh that uh her support uh continues to be voiced. So thank you very much. Uh to the Commissioners and thank you for your time and consideration. Councilor Murphy is in full support of this project for On the Dot. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
All I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh at this point, we'll close out our pu- uh this portion of the hearing and went through our business session. Questions, comments, motions?
Just want to commend the team on a great presentation. Uh I like both playful components of the. Architectural elements and the well-thought-out landscape plan and the addition of those trees in this area.
Yeah, I would echo Ricardo, both in in compliments to the team on this proposal and also to the community, a project of this scale. Uh to be accepted and supported by the neighborhood groups and the community at large is a great sign for South Boston and it appears to be a great project.
Of the motion.
Uh I move to. Accept development plan for Phase One B sixty-five Ellery Street, seventy-five Ellery Street and. Five oh five Dorchester Avenue within planned development area number one four four On the Dot, South Boston.
I second.
The motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? Harry, now we'll do a roll call. Michael Nichols?
Yes.
Nelson Arroyo?
Yes.
David Ma?
Yes.
Uh Aisha Miller?
Yes.
Ricardo Ostrich?
Yes.
Navida Burns?
Yes.
And I vote yes, seven, nothing. Congratulations. It was a great presentation. Good luck. Can't wait to see.
Thank you.
Everyone.
You all. Move right into our next uh meeting. There's a hearing. The Boston Zoning Commission to consider a petition for the approval of tax amendment. Application number five two six and map amendment application number seven eight two will respect the flood hazard zoning. The hearing was duly advertised May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four on the Boston Herald. And the Boston Zoning Commission hearing on petitions, the opponent will first present their case. Now subject to question by members of the commission only, we are taking support and opposition at the same time. If you're planning to testify, please take the time to verify that your computer microphone is active. Please click the hand icon on your zoom control panel. This will signal staff if you would like to speak. When your hand is raised, your hand icon will be blue. If you're what, if you're calling into the meeting and would like to testify, please dial star nine to raise your hand. When I call for public testimony. A member of the staff will announce your name and allow you to speak. You must unmute your microphone. Your webcam will not be active. Please give your full name. Any group affiliation and answer whether you support or oppose the petition. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes. If necessary, I will advise you when you have thirty seconds remaining. At that time, please summarize your remarks or the meeting can continue when others may be heard. Finally, the opponent will allow a brief five to ten minute period of rebuttal if they so desire. Please begin the presentation.
Uh Rachel, before you jump in, uh Mr. Chairman, I just want you to be made aware that Drew Lef has joined the meeting, so now we have eight commissioners.
Hey, welcome, Drew.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Hurley and members of the commission. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, very well. Thank you.
Fantastic. My name is Rachel Umkies and I'm a planner two on the zoning reform team here. I'm very excited to present to you today an overview of our proposed uh Article twenty-five flood hazard district map and text amendments. This was very much a joint effort requiring coordination with ISD, the Environment Department, the Conservation Commission. FEMA, DCR, uh past BPDA employees and and others. Next slide, please. So as a quick refresher, let's go ahead and quickly talk about what uh the flood hazard district does now. So FEMA, oh, I'm sorry, next slide, Joanne, please. There we go. Uh the the Federal Emergency Management Agency has defined certain areas as high risk for flooding. Those areas are called special flood hazard areas or SFHAs, and we'll discuss them in a little bit more detail later. But overall, the purpose of Article twenty-five is to regulate what can be built in SFHAs in order to minimize losses of life or property. That are caused by flooding. Next slide, please. So the NFIP or the National Flood Insurance Program is managed by FEMA. The program was uh. The program was. Was created in nineteen sixty-eight in response to the growing cost of rebuilding after floods. The federal government realized that many people would not be able to afford flood insurance if it was unsubsidized. And in some cases, private insurers weren't even offering coverage in high-risk areas in order to cut costs. Next slide, please. Uh Joanne, I apologize. I think the slides are out of order. Is there a way that I could uh be able to share my screen?
Yes, go ahead. I'll stop sharing.
Okay, let me go ahead and give that a try. Apo- apologies, all.
Sorry. Take your time, get the setup.
Okay. It looks like participant screen sharing is disabled. Cyrus, I don't know if uh Cyrus or Joanne, I don't know if you all need to grant me that.
Joanne, are you able to uh promote Rachel to co-host? I'm having some some issues.
Yes, I'll I'll try to do it. Thanks so much.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Joanne. Uh next slide. Next slide. Okay, so we'll just uh hop back into slide three. Apologies for the delay. So the the National Flood Insurance Program or the NFIP is managed by FEMA. And it was created back in nineteen sixty-eight uh because the federal government realized that. People were not going to be able to afford flood insurance if it wasn't subsidized. And in a lot of cases, private insurers were uh declining to cover high-risk areas at all in order to cut their costs. And Boston is already an NFIP community. Next slide, please. So why are we uh currently involved? So quite simply, because it's a very good deal for Boston. Being an NFIP community means that our city can access storm recovery funds and insurance protection, no matter what the risk is. In terms of the timeline, this is actually our last chance to make these map and text updates in order to remain in federal compliance. And continue to be an NFIP community. Next slide, please. Now, in order to best explain the changes, uh the proposed changes to the zoning code and maps, I'm going to review three key flood risk terms with you. First, the base flood elevation level or the BFE. It's a very big factor in how much people are charged for flood insurance. And it's basically the level that FEMA expects the surface water to rise to in the event of a one percent annual chance storm. Uh which is also known more colloquially as a one-hundred-year storm. Next slide, please. So flood insurance rate maps or firms are the official FEMA maps that show a community's BFE. And point out where exactly the special flood hazard areas are. They're very detailed and so they can sometimes be difficult to read and understand, but they are great for referencing as an official source. Next slide, please. The special flood hazard area is where the NFIP's floodplain management regulations are enforced. And it's also where, in almost all cases, the mandatory purchase of flood insurance is going to apply. It includes all flood zones, beginning with the letters A and B. What you're seeing here is a snapshot of our SFHA change viewer, which anyone can use to see if their address. Uh would be moved into an SFHA when the maps are updated. And it's been available on the BPDA website on the zoning initiatives page for around four months now. Next slide, please. So with the change viewer, what we were looking to do was was really simplify some of the information on the firms to be able to give people an easy way. To see if these updates would apply to them. So basically a yes or no answer. This FEMA update focuses on non-coastal areas and uh it will affect about a hundred parcels. The properties being moved into the SFHA are marked in pink on the online map. Uh you should have also received the pending firms in your in your packet. But overall, what we're seeing is parcels being added into the SFHA along the Roxbury-Mattapan border, West Roxbury. Hyde Park, Roselandale, Jamaica Plain, and Back Bay. Next slide, please. So to recap, this update is really all about keeping us in compliance with NFIP regulations. So that Boston can continue to benefit from federal subsidies. And although Boston hasn't had an update in a long time, FEMA does update their firms on an ongoing semi-regular basis. And requires NFIP communities to adopt the new firms uh along with the zoning changes as needed. Next slide, please. So now we're going to go ahead and zoom in a bit and I'll touch on the main components of the map and text amendments. Uh like I said, you should have received the pending firms and and again, we do recommend taking a look at our our change viewer. Because it lets you view all of the pending firms for Boston at once. Next slide, please. So as for the text amendment, uh we are anticipating that it's going to affect people newly moved into the SFHA in two key ways. The first is large-scale renovations. So generally speaking, if the owner is in an SFHA and they're trying to substantially improve or add on to their home. If it adds more than fifty percent of the assessed value to that structure, it will have to be flood resistant. This is aligned with current state building code requirements. So the main difference is that now it's going to apply to parcels that are being newly moved into the SFHA. Next slide, please. So the second key way that we expected to affect people is flood insurance. There will be a requirement for most owners newly mapped into an SFHA to purchase flood insurance. And there are a few other text amendment changes worth mentioning. One is the clarification of the role of floodplain administrator at ISD, which the department is actively hiring for. The floodplain administrator will be responsible for the initial determinations of the boundaries of flood hazard zones and floodways. The amendment specifies that the building commissioner will act as the floodplain administrator when there is no one in this, that role, such as now. And uh you all may also be aware of our ongoing work to update Article Two, our definitions article. And you'll notice that the terms in the proposed text amendment are self-referencing because of that. So. So the terms are defined entirely within Article twenty-five instead of referring back to Article Two. Next slide, please. So uh while there was no legal notice requirement for these proposed amendments. We still really wanted to make sure that people were aware that it was coming because flood insurance can be a substantial expense. So to that end, we had a recorded info session with interpretation on April fourth. And published the SFHA change viewer discussed earlier online so that anyone would be able to easily and quickly see if this change would affect them. We also ran newspaper ads and placed information in neighborhood newsletters. Uh additionally, in late May, we did a multilingual mailing to Boston property owners that would be directly affected by the proposed changes. So owners that were being moved into an SFHA. The mailing invited them to an in-person meeting that we are co-running tonight with staff from FEMA, the NFIP, and DCR. That really allows folks to get one-on-one personalized assistance in understanding. What is this change going to mean for me? What is it going to mean for my property and my expenses? Uh it it, the mailing itself also provided them with direct contact info to those federal and state officials if they weren't able to attend. Because we really wanted everyone to have the opportunity for that same individualized assistance. Um flood insurance can be very complicated, flood risk can be very complicated. So that was really an important element of our outreach. Next slide, please. So what's next? Um we have a few items still left to cross off our list. Next slide, please. So, looking forward, if we receive the approval of this commission, the last federal compliance step is submitting an adopted version of the amendments and getting official approval from the NFIP. After that, the new map and text amendment would take effect on July 3, 2024. Next slide, please. Thanks so much for listening, and I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you, Rachel. Any questions or comments from the commission?
Hi, Rachel. Thanks for the presentation. I had a question. Could you kind of expand a little bit on the role of the floodplain administrator?
So, I don't have that in front of me, I'm afraid. It is laid out in the code, and I'm happy to send that to you afterwards. But my understanding is that they sort of step in when there's a conflict with the zones.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, and homeowners obviously also have the option to submit a letter of map change to FEMA. You know, none of this is set in stone, and it is appealable.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. Any public testimony, Jeff?
I have, if anybody would like to testify on this hearing, please raise your hand now. I don't currently see any, but I want to hold on for a minute.
Yeah, no problem. No, Mr. Chairman, nobody's raising their hands. Thank you. At this point, we're going to close out this portion of the hearing and enter our business session. Questions, comments, motions?
I have a question about, can someone on BPDA staff talk about sort of what potential perceived impacts this could have for BIPOC communities in terms of assessments? And you know, how they foresee that there could be some challenges for BIPOC communities in kind of handling this change?
Anyone want to take that on?
I'm happy to touch on that briefly. So, assessments have traditionally been, you know, an area where we've seen a lot of racial bias, and there was definitely some discussion early on about whether or not this should be... We basically had two options to base the substantial improvement required definition on, meaning that if people made improvements to their home, you know, worth 50% or more of it, we could do market value or assessed value. We did feel that assessed value would be more stable and an easier, you know, bar for folks to pass because bringing things up to flood-resistant standards can be quite difficult and expensive. And, you know, we do think that it's important to note that it is possible to appeal the assessed value, and so that may be an option.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? We'll accept motions.
All right. I motion to approve the text amendment, application number 526, map amendment, application number 782, Article 25 flood hazard districts.
Second. Motion second. We missed Jill. We missed Jill. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call. Michael Nichols?
Yes.
Nelson Arroyo?
Yes.
David Ma?
Yes.
Gru Lef?
Yes.
Ayesha Miller?
Yes.
Ricardo Ostrich?
Yes.
Avita Burns?
Um, yes, I just also just want to do a quick name correction. It's Nikita, with N-A-K-E-E-D-A. Okay, thank you so much.
Very sorry, Nikita. I thought I copied it down right. Very sorry. It won't happen again. I apologize. And... Did you vote? Nikita?
She did.
I think she did.
Yes, I voted in favor.
All right, thank you. I apologize again. And I vote yes. Seven, no, eight, nothing. Right? Eight, nothing. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to our next hearing. As a hearing recorder, Boston Zoning Commission, I consider a petition for the approval of map amendment application number 783, a development plan for planned development area number 154180, Western Avenue. The hearing was duly advertised, May 23, 2024, in the Boston Herald. In the Boston Zoning Commission hearing, our petitions, a proponent will first present their case and is subject to questioning by members of the commission only. We're taking support and opposition at the same time. If you're planning to testify, please take the time to verify that your computer microphone is active. Click the hand icon on your Zoom control panel. If your signal staff do like to speak, when your hand is raised, your hand icon will be blue. If you're calling into the meeting and like to testify, please dial star nine to raise your hand. When I call for public testimony, a member of the staff will announce your name and allow you to speak. You must unmute your microphone. Your webcam will not be active. Please give your full name, any group affiliation, and announce whether you support or oppose the petition. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes. If necessary, I'll advise you, when you have 30 seconds remaining at that time, please summarize your remarks so the meeting can continue and others may be heard. Finally, the proponents will allow a brief five-to-ten minute period for rebuttal, if they so desire. Please begin the presentation.
Camille, your headset's muted. We haven't heard anything that you've been saying.
Okay, sorry about that. Thanks for letting me know. Hi, I'm Camille Platt. I'm a project manager at the BPDA. I'll make this super quick if folks were not able to hear me. The proposed project in front of you is an Article 80, Large Project and Plan Development Area Plan, located at 180 Western Avenue in the Alston neighborhood of Boston. Proposed project site consists of a 1.2-acre tract of land bounded by Western Avenue to the north, Bertram Street to the south, North Harvard Street to the west, and Travis Street to the east. Project site currently comprises multiple vacant commercial buildings and surface parking lots. The project proposes to demolish the existing buildings on the site and to construct a pedestrian-oriented mixed-use building, including residential uses, ground-floor retail, restaurant, and service uses. The proposed project comprises an approximately seven-story building, including residential space that includes 274 units, ground-floor retail, and those restaurant and service uses, with shared indoor and outdoor amenity spaces for residents served by parking located within the building. The proposed project will also include enclosed, secure bike storage areas for residents and employees of the project, as well as publicly accessible short-term bicycle parking spaces. The project will create a new sidewalk area and active café zone along the project site frontage, along with new landscaping and publicly accessible spaces, including a pocket park along Bertram Street. This Article 80 process began in July of 2020. During this process, seven joint Harvard-Alston public and task force meetings were held. The uses of the site evolved in response to community feedback, along with staff response, existing neighborhood context, which was very much made holistic by many Alston groups. Specifically, the height, materiality, and massing of the buildings went through many iterations to come to its current design. One comment letter in support was received from a member of the Harvard-Alston Task Force and one in opposition to date. I'll now turn it over to my colleagues. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Camille.
Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Ford Delvecchio, and I'll be presenting three slides on the planning and zoning context prepared by the BPDA zoning compliance team. After a multi-year planning process, the Western Avenue corridor study... Shortly thereafter, the zoning commission adopted map and text zoning amendments to codify the plan's land use.
Boy, you're breaking in and out. You're coming in and out.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right.
Um, I'll say, let me try again. After a multi-year planning process, the Western Avenue corridor study, also known as WACERZI, was adopted by the BPDA Board in October 2022. Shortly thereafter, the zoning commission adopted map and text zoning amendments to codify the plan's land use, dimensional, and public realm recommendations. Am I staying connected at this point?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you. The 180 Western Avenue mixed-use proposal sits at the heart of the Berry's Corner node of Western Avenue, a focal point of the WACERZI study. Staff review was also guided by citywide policies, including the Smart Utilities Checklist, the EV readiness policy, Complete Streets Design Guidelines, and BTD Parking Maximals and Bike Parking Guidelines. Next slide, please. In addition to the WACERZI plan, 180 Western Avenue is located the nexus of several ongoing planning initiatives. These plans inform the staff team's understanding of the larger Alston planning context, including the Enterprise Research Campus and Campus District and Greenway Plan, the Beacon Park Yards Framework Plan, the Western Ave Transit Way Planning, and the Alston Brighton Community Plan. Next slide, please. The 180 Western Avenue proposed planned development area overlay is well-aligned with the current underlying WACERZI zoning for Berry's Corner. This includes consistency with regulations for use, height, floor area ratio, open space, and parking. The proponent has taken advantage of a feature of WACERZI that allows for FAR bonuses up to 4.0 for projects that allocate at least 17% of total residential square footage to income-restricted housing that is affordable to households averaging 60% AMI. Thank you, and I will now turn over to the development team for a more detailed presentation of their proposal.
Thank you, Ford.
I thank you. Good morning, Chairman Hurley and members of the commission. My name is Chris Reiner. I'm a lawyer at Goldston and stores, appearing on behalf of the project proponent, Samuels and Associates. Peter Sugaretti from Samuels is unable to attend this morning, but wanted me to express his appreciation of the commission's attention to this important project today. I'm joined by Emily Paparella from Elka Smith Freddy Architects, who will also present on the project, as well as other members of the project team. Samuels is a longtime developer and owner in the city of Boston, having developed, owned, and managed projects for over 25 years, including in the Alston neighborhood. We are excited to advance today the PDA development plan for the 180 Western project. As you've heard, a 274-unit residential project with significant affordability commitments, ground-floor open space and public realm improvements, as well as activated ground-floor retail and restaurant uses in the Berry's Corner section of Alston. We've been working with the community, BPDA, elected officials, and others for over four years on the project, which has led to refinements and improvements through their input. As you've heard, the project and PDA development plan have also been shaped by and are compliant with the recently adopted Western Avenue corridor study and rezoning approved in late 2022. Emily's presentation will touch upon these metrics, which are reflected in the PDA development plan. With that, I'll turn the presentation over to Emily. We'll run through the remainder of our materials. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Good morning, Chair Hurley and members of the commission. Next slide, please. The 180 Western Avenue site is located at the intersection of Western Avenue and North Harvard Streets. And it's a significant intersection in Lower Alston because it creates a sort of a gateway to the neighborhood. And it's slowly becoming a walkable neighborhood center. To the south of our site is a fine-grained scale of primarily three-family and single-family residential buildings. And to the north of our site is Continuum, Harvard Stadium and Athletics Fields, Harvard Business School. And along Western Ave to the east is the Harvard Science and Engineering Building, the Future Enterprise Research Campus. And to the west on Western Ave is Development in Progress, including the Nexus Campus or Alston Lab Works. Other forthcoming development in this area includes Harvard ART, just to the north of our site. It's both the ART and Harvard University Housing at 175 North Harvard Street, Commercial and Residential Development at WBZ, and obviously, the Enterprise Research Campus to the east. We think that in the context of this development and recent developments, such as Continuum, 180 Western Ave is very much consistent with the scale of Western Avenue and, as Ford pointed out, is compliant with the WACERZI guidelines. Next slide, please. As we zoom into the site a little bit, the site itself, as you see highlighted here, is approximately 1.2 acres. You can see that it currently lends itself primarily to vehicular use and is comprised primarily of surface parking and includes multiple curb cuts. You can also see the site's proximity to the neighborhood to the south. Between the site and the neighborhood is a small buffer that includes this small Future Cafe and surface parking and an institutional building that are within Harvard University's IMP. Next slide, please. Existing buildings on the site include a mix of vacant, single-story commercial and retail buildings, as well as a vacant three-family residential building on Western Ave. Next slide, please. The proposed project is a pedestrian-oriented mixed-use building that's going to create active edges to define Berry's Corner and reinforce it as a pedestrian-centered square. To do this, we're maximizing retail frontage all along North Harvard Street and Western Avenue. We've carved away massing to create wider sidewalks on Western Ave and on North Harvard Street. And as you can see, at Bertram Street to the south of our project or at the south edge of our building, we're carving a way to create a publicly accessible, south-facing open space. You can see that these spaces start to create a connection of open spaces that extend from Bertram Street along North Harvard Street to the north and up to the Grove and beyond. The front door to the building is on Bertram Street, which is in yellow at the bottom of the building on this slide, kind of page south. And, oh, sorry, also there you can see access to secure bike parking and bike storage. A secondary entry is on Western Avenue, and entry to the parking occurs off of Travis Street, Plan East. Next slide, please. As Ford pointed out, the proposed project is located within the planning boundaries of the Western Avenue Corridor Study and rezoning WACERZI, which was adopted by the BPDA Board in October of 2022. And the WACERZI provides zoning, urban design, and mobility frameworks to guide change in this area, which, as you know, has been under increased development demand. Particularly, the WACERZI study outlines urban design recommendations like the increased setbacks on Western Ave to allow for public realm and mobility. It also establishes higher density limits in key areas, Berry's Corner being one of them. And again, as Ford already pointed out, the project anticipates an FAR of 4.0, and as such, no less than 17% of the residential GFA will be set aside for residential units, and they'll be available to households averaging 60% AMI. Going down to height, the building is seven stories, no taller than 90 feet, and no more than 80% lot coverage. And again, with setbacks no less than 10 feet on Western Ave. The project includes approximately 274 residential units. Approximately 41 of those will be affordable units, and up to 63 vehicles are a parking ratio of 0.23. Next slide, please. This view of the building is taken standing across the street on Western Ave at Continuum, if you know that building. But we're looking east, so towards Harvard and the river. The massing is a sweeping gesture here. It follows the curve of the street where Western Avenue turns into North Harvard Street. The ground floor of the building, as you can see, is continuous retail along these edges with the intent to provide operable storefronts and engage with the café zone. The architecture is five stories of brick with metal shingles above all of these materials in a warm, light-colored, neutral palette, and with brick detailing to include soldier coursing at the spandrels, you can see these horizontal bands to create variety of texture and to add scale. Next slide, please. Here, we've moved around to the south side of the building on Bertram Street. You can see that the building is differentiated here by color and by composition. So unlike the continuous gesture along Western Ave, here, we're breaking the building in So unlike the continuous gesture along Western Ave, here we're breaking the building into three parts to better acknowledge the scale of the neighborhood to the south. We're using red brick, which, which evokes a traditional sensibility, um, the color, uh, um. Sorry, we're also incorporating a variety of window sizes here and including smaller window sizes, again, to reinforce and acknowledge the scale of the residential neighborhood to the south. You can see on the left-hand side of your page where the building massing steps down. That is the front door, so to speak, the main primary entry to the building. It's adjacent to that open space on Bertram Street and above that where the building, um, where the building steps down is the uh, residential roof terrace at level two. Next slide, please. Uh, here you're looking at a section perspective along North Harvard Street. We're looking north towards the intersection at Western Ave and towards the Grove. And in the vignette or the li- the little snip on the top-left side of your page, you're seeing the clock and the visual display that will highlight the existing historic mile marker that's near the site. Um, in the section, sort of reading from left to right, you're seeing the new raised and separated cycle track that the project will be adding. It includes a curbed, uh, buffer between the vehicular lanes. To the right of that, a furnishing zone includes plantings and bike parking, a seven-foot pedestrian zone, and what we've added here, the project is adding this interstitial zone, um, which we're, we've sort of started calling a promenade. It adds a secondary row of trees, plantings and benches. And it creates a publicly accessible, uh, seating space for, for the public. To the right of that, finally, is the cafe zone adjacent to the building and, and the, and the retail, transparent retail there. Um, next slide, please. The proposed project will improve the pedestrian experience with new place-making elements, walkable sidewalks, new landscaping, plantings and lighting. There's two publicly accessible open spaces, um, the promenade I just showed on North Harvard Street and the, and the open space that's south-facing on Bertram. Together, they provide over one hundred linear feet of bench seating. Um, the new trees were, the project provides will, will increase aesthetic value, but also provide shade and reduction of the urban heat island effect. And continuous retail will enhance the pedestrian experience and really reinforce Berry's Corner as a neighborhood square. Um, additionally, proactive construction mitigation will be managed, will be managed by a third party that has established relationships both to the proponent and to the neighborhood. Next slide, please. The proposed project provides new affordable housing units consistent with the requirements outlined in the Whacker Z study, which will, and they'll be weighted towards two and three-bedroom floor plans. The building is all electric for the residential portion. By that, I mean, in the future, there may be gas cooking in one of the, uh, if there's a restaurant on the ground floor. Um, but, but the building also targets lead gold certifiability as well as passive health certification. And additionally, we're, we're designing a solar-ready roof should the installation of solar be viable um, upon, uh, fur- further study or when we get to that point. And finally, the project is bringing new bike lanes, wider sidewalks, a raised crosswalk on Bertram Street, um, the elimination of six curb cuts and a, in a low-to-moderate parking ratio. The project includes a nineteen-doc blue bike station and builds secure bike storage for a minimum of one bike per unit as well as visitor parking. All of this infrastructure significantly, uh, enhances the comfort and safety for cyclists and pedestrians. Next slide. Thank you. With that, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you, Emily. We take the, uh, presentation down, please. Thank you. Questions, comments from the question? Nothing? Do you have any, uh, public testimony, Jeff?
Uh, yeah, I have a couple of raised hands, uh, Mr. Chairman. Minor.
Uh, thank you, Jeff. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. Minor Perez representing the Carpenter's Union. On behalf of Hunter's Union Carpenters, a living water city of Boston, I want to go and support for, uh, this project. And it must be said, kudos to a great job on the community outreach of this project. They are accommodating the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Minor.
Uh, John Cuzak. John, go ahead.
Uh, good morning to, uh, the Commission and Chief, uh, Chair. Uh, my name is John Cuzak. I live at one eighty-six Washington Street in Brighton. Uh, I appreciate this project is in compliance with Whacker Z. I like the North Harvard Promenade. Uh, after a very long design process with the community, I really love the massing and the design and the fact that the construction mitigation of this project is actually incorporated in the design. Uh, I totally support this project. I really think it's going to be a great addition to Berry's Corner. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Uh, at this point, we'll close out this portion of the hearing and enter our business session. Any questions, comments, motions?
I'm happy to make a motion. Uh, I move to adopt map amendment application number seven eighty-three, plan development area number one fifty-four, one eighty Western Avenue, map seven B, seven D, Alston Brighton Neighborhood District.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing number two roll call, Michael Nichols.
Yes.
Nelson Arroyo. Nelson?
Yes, sorry, couldn't unmute. Yes.
All right. Uh, David Ma.
Yes.
Drew Lef.
Yes.
Ayesha Miller.
Yes.
Nikita Burns.
I'd like to abstain.
We only have seven people voting. You're gonna abstain?
I'd still like to abstain. I'm sorry. It's, it's close to our district and I just want to be very careful about home voting only. Thank you so much.
Well, uh, Mr. Commissioner, uh, a- a- and, and Jeff, if, if she abstains, I believe we may need a continuance. Uh, we only have seven commissioners. We need seven, uh, uh, votes to approve. Uh, I believe one of the commissioners had to drop off during the hearing.
Correct.
Yeah, correct. So, um, we would have to defer this to the next meeting, which would be mid-July.
Nikita, uh, we needed all these things ahead of time so we can make sure we have enough people to vote.
I, I totally apologize. I'm sorry. I guess I missed that part. Um, I've been, I, um, tried my best to, uh, look at everything, but, um, I just, I'd rather be safer and sorry if, if we can please respect that about me. Thank you.
Uh. So, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Chris, as long as this is okay with you, I would recommend that we vote to defer this until the next meeting. Um, right now, which is scheduled for July seventeenth.
So I would. Thank you. I, I don't, I, I, you know, on behalf of the proponent, I don't think we have a choice. Um, there's, there's not enough uh, commissioners to hold a, a, an approval vote. And unfortunately, with the abstention, um, you know, we, we consent to the deferral uh, for one month and hope that we will have a sufficient number of commissioners, uh, in July. Ricardo.
Another question from a commission to defer this till July seventeenth.
Ricardo was definitely left, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, uh, sorry, this, uh, we try and avoid, uh, pitfalls like this, but sometimes they're unavoidable. Uh.
Can you folks hear me?
Yeah.
I will not be here for the July meeting, just so you know.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry. What is the date for the July meeting?
Seventeenth. I need a motion to defer this.
No, no. Need a second.
Second.
Motion to defer all in favor.
Hi.
Roll call on that, Jeff. I don't think we need a roll call on that, right?
Yeah, we do need a roll call on this one.
The motion, the motion of second, uh, to defer this to, uh, next meeting, July seventeenth. Michael Nichols.
Yes.
Nelson Arroyo.
Yes.
David Ma.
Yes.
Uh, Drew Lef.
Yes.
Ayesha Miller.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Jay Hurley, I vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and Jeff, I, I guess just one question I have is, is whether it's possible um, that.
Chris, why don't we talk offline? Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, John.
All right, look, we have one final hearing. Everybody ready to start right now?
Got a quick question, Jeff. Uh, but we just voted to defer, uh, but only six people voted. Is that good enough or do we need something else for, uh?
Yeah, thank you, Nelson. I almost, I, that's why I hesitate voting because I'm like, if we can't vote like that, I'll have to go on like determined.
Nikita could vote to defer it. Or else we're hung. We shouldn't have had this hearing if.
Yeah.
To defer.
Yeah, I just.
But ahead of time, it's no different than, we've had meetings before where we only had people, we heard the meeting and waited till the next meeting to vote on.
Yeah, because you can hear the meeting with six.
I don't think we had a vote on a defer. I mean, I think it automatically defers when someone abstains.
Re- re- respectfully, y- you only need six votes to, uh, continue. Um, you can actually do that with less votes, um, but, uh, it, the, the vote to defer is, is fine with the number of votes that were taken.
Thank you. Lovely darling, all our eyes.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Better safe than sorry.
All right. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
All right, uh, does anybody need a, a, a break before we stop this last meeting? No. Okay, get right into it. This is a hearing for the Boston Zoning Commission to consider a petition for plan development area number six, sixty-nine, a hundred acres and the development plan for two thirty-two A Street within plan development area number sixty-nine, a hundred acres, South Boston. The hearing was duly advertised on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four in the Boston Herald and the Boston Zoning Commission hearing on petitions. The proponent will first present their case and subject what, subject to questioning by members of the commission only. We are taking support in our position at the same time. If you're planning to testify, please take the time to verify that your computer microphone is active. Click the hand icon on your Zoom control panel. This will signal staff if you would like to speak. When your hand is raised, your hand icon will be blue. If you call into the meeting and would like to testify, please dial star nine to raise your hand. When I call for public testimony, a member of the staff will announce your name and allow you to speak. You must unmute your microphone. Your webcam will not be active. Please give your full name and a group affiliation, announce whether you support or oppose the petition. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes. If necessary, I advise you, when you have thirty seconds remain, at that time, please summarize your remarks so the meeting can continue and others may be heard. Please begin the presentation.
Uh, thank you again, Chair Hurley and members of the Commission. I'm here before you to present the two thirty-two A Street project, the Seventh Amendment to the Hundred Acres Master Plan and the Associated Development Plan within the Hundred Acres.
Welcome back.
Okay, in Fort Point, within the South Boston waterfront and the Hundred Acres Master Plan, the two thirty-two A Street project proposes to construct a new commercial lab office and R and D building with facilities of public accommodation on the ground floor, along with the new public waterfront park space and associated public realm. The project and the dis- the Associated Development Plan are consistent with the Hundred Acres Master Plan and represent the continuation of the Hundred Acres vision along the Fort Point Channel, transforming a currently underutilized site. The project will bring a number of important benefits to the neighborhood from resilience and sustainability measures to important cultural and civic contributions. As currently designed, the proposed project is anticipated to create approximately one point five acres, a publicly accessible open space and public realm areas along the Fort Point Channel waterfront, converting approximately one point one acres of the project site previously proposed for use as building footprint under the Hundred Acres Master Plan and publicly accessible open space and public realm area, which represents nearly three times the previously, previously planned publicly accessible open space and public realm areas for the project site. The result of which is a waterfront public park, three times the size of what was contemplated in the Hundred Acres Master Plan. The open space will be dedicated to public use in perpetuity and conveyed to the city of Boston. Within the open space along the Fort Point Channel, the project will construct a new flood-resilient berm along the length of the project site perpendicular to the Fort Point Channel. This represents a nearly seven million dollar investment in neighborhood flood resiliency. Additionally, the proponent will seek to electrify open space to allow for a variety of programming uses intended to promote and more easily enable arts, culture, events and creative activation. The project will also explore the installation of rigging points on the building facade along Binford Street to support element such as aerial art installations, subject to approval from the appropriate parties with coordination with the butters, as well as a commitment to two hundred fifty thousand dollars for public art on the project site. This project also sits within chapter ninety-one tie lines, which come with a number of requirements regarding commitments to facilities of public accommodations, which can include ground for, ground floor, cultural and civic space, as well as restaurants and water fountains and, uh, commitments to water sheet activation, such as the proponent's commitment for an onsite drag-and-boat storage. To meet these requirements, the project must deliver at least seven thousand eight hundred square feet of facilities of public accommodations. The proponent team has committed to an additional nine thousand five hundred square feet of FBA space above and beyond what is required for a total of seventeen thousand three hundred square feet, over double what is required under chapter ninety-one. Within that dedicated FBA space, eight thousand square feet will be dedicated to a future, future cultural civic space in perpetuity. The proponent team is committed to work with the mayor's office of arts and culture and other city agencies at the appropriate time to determine end user through the development of a public RFI and RFP process. And to ensure the long-term success of the future tenant and space, the proponent has committed to determining a subsidized rent rate with MoAC, waiving real estate taxes estimated to be no less than twenty-three dollars a square foot or about a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars per year and a build-out contribution of up to eight hundred thousand dollars or a hundred dollars a squ- excuse me, a hundred dollars a square foot. The project will also be undertaking a future chapter ninety-one license review, where there will be a future process to lay out additional water sheet activation opportunities and support. I'll now turn to my colleague, Ilana Hames, to take through the contacts and the Tishman Spire team to take you through the project presentation. Thank you.
Excellent. Ilana?
Sorry, I lost my unmute button. Uh, good morning, Commissioners. I'm Ilana Hames and I am the zoning compliance planner assigned to this project. Uh, next slide, please. The proposed project at two thirty-two A Street is located within the South Boston neighborhood in a restricted manufacturing sub-district. The proposed project is within the boundaries of the Hundred Acres Master Plan, uh, which was formalized into zoning through plan de- development area number sixty-nine. It is also within the jurisdiction of chapter ninety-one, as Nick mentioned, and is subject to the South Boston Municipal Harbor Plan. The development site comprises the final two parcels of PDA number nine, number sixty-nine to be developed. These parcels are labeled in the PDA as parcels G seven and G eight. The proposed project is consistent with the requirements established in this PDA. Next slide, please. The One Hundred Acres Master Plan established a vision for the redevelopment of approximately thirty-five acres of vacant surface parking to create a mixed-use district with a balance of residential, commercial, office and arts uses. Ground floor uses are meant to activate the streetscape and contribute to a twenty-four-hour activity. Design guidelines establish buffers between a mix of commercial, manufacturing and residential uses. Importantly, community benefits, including waterfront access, are highlighted to connect this area to the inner Fort Point neighborhood. The proposed project broadly advances the goals of the One Hundred Acres Master Plan by creating significant public realm and open space on site while respecting the scale and character of the existing Fort Point built fabric. Next slide, please. The proposed project aligns with the multimodal, multimodal transportation goals set forth in the South Boston Seaport Transportation Plan. Additional setbacks along A Street open the street up for improved pedestrian conditions, as well as designated bicycle lanes where there are currently sharrows. The extension of Neco Street across the site allows for future connectivity with additional developments within the South Boston waterfront and along the Fort Point Channel. Next slide, please. The proposed project is located within the project area of the Fort Point Channel Infrastructure Project, a key resilience project that will develop flood protection mechanisms to control future storm surge and mitigate the impacts. and mitigate the impacts of sea level rise on significant flood flood pathways. The proposed project will tie into the improvements as part of this initiative. This will include the construction of a berm aligned with the planned resilience infrastructure of the adjacent properties fronting on the Fort Point Channel. The building will be elevated to comply with the requirements of the coastal flood resilience overlay district and align with climate-ready South Boston flood projections. Next slide, please. The proposed parking supply and approximate parking ratio, point three seven spaces per one thousand square feet, is compliant with the city's maximum parking ratios for the site. The project is within the South Boston parking freeze, and the proponent must permit these spaces through the Air Pollution Air Pollution Control Commission that is administered by the city's environment department. The project is also located, as Nick mentioned, on a mix of Commonwealth tidelands, private tidelands, and landlocked tidelands, subject to the regulations of chapter ninety-one and within the boundary of that South Boston waterfront municipal harbor plan. The proposal contains the required facilities of of public accommodation as per these regulations, and will continue forward to seek licensing from the State Department of Environmental Protection. Thank you, and I'll now turn it over to the development team to present the project in more detail.
Thank you, Alana.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time this morning, and thank you, Nick and Alana, for providing that introduction and context. My name is Lauren Ferrando with Tischman Spire. Breakthrough Properties, the proponent of the two thirty-two A project, and I'm joined by my colleague Charlie Clea of Payette Associates, serving as the project architect. So beyond what you see on the timeline here, the proposal set forth today is really the result of years of planning and community engagement that led to the creation of the Hundred Acres Master Plan. Our proposal today is really following in that footsteps of that great work and has been directly shaped and impacted by the impressive engagement of the Fort Point and South Boston neighborhoods over the last several years of us working on this site. Next slide, please. As Alana and Nick outlined, the site is subject to the Hundred Acres Master Plan, South Boston Municipal Harbor Plan, and chapter ninety-one. The project was approved by B C D C on May seventh and approved by the B P A Board on May sixteen, which brings us here today. We look forward to continuing to collaborate and engage with this neighborhood and the city through the state-level chapter ninety-one process and beyond. Next slide, please. Using the Hundred Acres Master Plan and four-point water sheet activation plans as our framework, we are proposing to develop the G eight parcel in accordance with what was contemplated in the PDA and convert roughly one point one acres of the G seven parcel previously contemplated for building area to instead accommodate a public waterfront park that which will be conveyed to the city of Boston for public use in perpetuity. Next slide, please. With this proposal, by foregoing vertical development on the G seven parcel, we are proposing to deliver a public waterfront park that is over three times the size of what was contemplated in the PDA, improving the site's ability to not only implement the district-wide resiliency goals set forth by the city and the resilient Fort Point infrastructure project, but to further improve upon them through its site-wide grading and creation of additional permeable surface. This scheme will also accommodate the extension of Neco Street, which was not contemplated in the original Hundred Acres Master Plan, among other public realm improvements, we'll highlight in a moment. This proposal also reduces the project's embodied carbon impact in line with the city's goals for sustainable development. Next slide, please. This project really strives to reflect the city's goals and objectives for climate resiliency, transit connectivity, and promoting equitable access to the waterfront and civic spaces. The project will develop a flood-prone site currently improved as a surface parking lot along the Fort Point Channel to a public park and implement onsite the onsite extent of the berm and associated site-wide grading. The project will also advance district-level frameworks for connectivity with the extension of Neco Street, widening of A Street, improvements to the South Bay Harbor Trail and Harbor Walk, and improvements to Binford Street. Next slide, please. The project has committed to provide more than two times the required FPA space on the ground floor and has further committed that eight thousand square feet of that FPA will be dedicated to civic and cultural uses in perpetuity. To celebrate what is currently a trademark use on the Fort Point Channel, the project will also provide for the storage of dragon boats in the below-grade garage and ancillary support services to promote practical use of the water sheet, such as access to drinking water and public restrooms. And to celebrate and support the arts community that is synonymous with Fort Point, in addition to the FPA and civic cultural space commitments, the project will contribute two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the creation and fabrication of public art on site by local artists and integrate infrastructure elements such as electrification of the park and rigging points for potential activations along Binford Street into the design of both the building and the site, so we can more easily enable art installations and cultural or civic activations. Next slide, please. Thank you. So here is an image of the site as it exists today. The red area outlined here, the two point four acre two thirty-two A site is currently improved as a surface parking lot with point two five acre Binford Street Park at its end along the channel. We are bound by A Street, Binford Street, the Fort Point Channel, and on one side, the Gillette Manufacturing Facility, and on the other side of Binford Street, the recently approved two forty-four, two eighty-four A Street project. Next slide, please. With that, I'll pass it to my colleague, Charlie.
Thank you, Alana.
Good morning, Chair Hurley and commissioners.
Morning.
Our building, as you can see here, is intended to be a modern reinterpretation of the wharf buildings that make up the preponderance of the Fort Point Channel neighborhood. And in that context, it's designed to be a very simple volume aligning with primary public realm edges. So, for example, we're picking up the edge of A Street aligned with our partners to the north at two forty-four A Street, and we'll similarly be doing so on the west facade that you see here and the the building, the two forty-four A Street building in the background. Our project is designed to provide as much space for public accommodation as possible at the ground floor, and so you can see this very transparent ground floor realm at the base of the building that is elevated, as you've heard in previous presentations, to protect us from the flood in twenty seventy, the hundred-year flood in twenty seventy, in accordance with resiliency directives, and actually the the firm that you were looking at earlier today from FEMA. The project sits over top of the I ninety tunnel extension, as a result, has some structural challenges that you can see expressed here by this trust that we have supporting the ground floor of the building cannily over the tunnel, but becoming part of the language of the architecture of our building. So we get this this chassis of structure that you see at the ground floor and a very simple volume above it for the R and D life sciences research facilities that you see that Nick mentioned. And then the top of our building, expressed here as a small terrace, but also our mechanical infrastructure and a solar photo will take array at the top of the building, all masked to look like the 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 sort of top of the building in a base middle top language architecture. Next slide. And really what the project is trying to do is be, as I said, modern reinterpretation of the wharf buildings. And so if you look to the upper left-hand corner here, the buildings along Summer Street are very much characteristic of this neighborhood, simple volumes with a base middle top. They're not expressive, exuberant geometries, they tend to be simple boxes, they vary in height slightly, and our building is trying to be a modern version of that, similar in its colorway, some kind of a masonry-like material terracotta, ultra-high-performance concrete, something slightly larger in scale than brick, but of that same realm and and something that will blend in with the fabric of the neighborhood. In that base structure, the the trust that I mentioned a few minutes ago, we're we're thinking of things like the cast iron facades you see, for example, in the Rusha Wharf building that we're in today. The bottom right-hand corner here is is common to this neighborhood, this idea of cast iron structures that that are part of the base of these buildings that address the public realm, and we think our building can do something similar. Next slide. In this world of a building that is trying to create spaces for public accommodation, we want the building to be very porous, very engaging to the neighborhood. So in this view, you see here from A Street looking down Binford towards downtown Boston, you can see that we have our our spaces of public accommodation on the left here with multiple datums, low and high, so that we can accommodate a variety of different programs. We're creating a pedestrian experience that's very welcoming and a very short service zone that is in dialogue with the service zone that is planned for two forty-four A Street, seen on the right. Next slide. As you move down Binford Street, what we really want to make sure that people are doing is experiencing that public park, this wonderful thing that we're giving back to the city, opening that up to Binford Street as soon as possible. So here, our building, the ground floor, the glass facade, is peeling away from that trust to open up that view to the park and to Fort Point Channel, really trying to bring the neighborhood as much as possible into that park, giving that back to the public realm. Next slide. Interestingly, when you're looking at the corner of A Street now on our our southern edge along the Gillette property that Lauren just mentioned, there's no provision for a street, but we wanted to make sure that that we we draw the pedestrian realm to that park again. And so we created this covered arcade that provides an accessible route all the way across the site up to our resilient twenty-one point five base flood elevation, or sorry, not floor elevation level, but also to the park elevation. So we're providing a tremendous amount of connection to that park, but it's also equally accessible for all all members of the public. You can see as well, the ground floor of our building is designed to be able to receive tall, volumed spaces of public accommodation, such as a dance studio or an art gallery, but also smaller-scale events, things with a lower ceiling, things at this canopy height that might be more suitable to retail. So we provided an architecture that's ready to receive a variety of tenants all facing that public realm. Next slide.
Thanks, Charlie. Yeah, thank you. We've covered a lot that this slide highlights, but it is helpful to zoom out and see the site in context with master plan. As Alana noted at the start, we are the last two parcels to be developed of this master plan PDA. So a lot of what our project seeks to do is to seamlessly integrate and respond to both what has been planned in the PDA and what has been set forth in the most recent projects, namely two forty-four, two eighty-four A Street, and seek to improve upon them, namely through the contribution of excess public realm, really making sure that the waterfront is equitable, accessible, and a draw for folks not only living in the immediate area but in other parts of the city and beyond to have a reason to come to the Fort Point Channel. Next slide, please. And that will be done through our one point two acre waterfront public park, which, as previously stated, per the PDA, was contemplated to be building area. So the site was, you know, originally conceived to have vertical development, really, across both parcels with the extension of Neco Street, that cut that into two buildings, and then we took it a step further to convey, you know, that G seven area to waterfront public, public open space. So what you see here will be dedicated to public use in perpetuity and conveyed to the city of Boston. The concept design for this park broadly advances the goals of the Hundred Acres Master Plan, the Hundred Acres Open Space Concept Plan, and the Fort Point Water Sheet Activation Plan, and its design prioritizes resiliency and equitable access to the waterfront. Excellent. We can skip this one as well, and that should conclude our formal presentation. Thank you.
Any questions, comments from the commission?
Yeah, I've got one question, Mr. Chairman. Question both for BPDA staff and the proponent. There's been sort of considerable public interest in the civic cultural space in the building, and I think rightly so, given the importance of such spaces to the community. For the record, as the civic cultural space commitment is outlined in the public benefit summary, a legal requirement or a voluntary commitment at the discretion of the proponents.
I'll start off, and then I'll turn it over to the Tischman team. It is a legal requirement, it's being written into the PDA. We've actually updated that language to make it even more clear and more restrictive as to what that can be. This cultural space will be provided on stated in this presentation and in the PDA, and I'll turn it over to Lauren.
Thanks, Nick. Yep, fully agree. The intent here and from day one has been that this eight thousand square foot civic space is in fact a commitment of the project, and we are happy to work with the the city and any groups to make sure that we have adequate language in there. But as Nick shared, we have worked extensively on that, and I think all parties are aligned that it is in fact a legal commitment.
Thank you, Bill. Any other questions? Make a mission. There are none, any public testimony, Joe?
Yes, Steve Hollinger. Steve, go ahead.
Hello, my name's Steve Hollinger. I don't expect you to vote against this project, but I will be raising my concerns through the chapter ninety-one process. I have nearly thirty years of experience in permitting chapter ninety-one projects and have never seen the language that's in this project with respect to that civic cultural space. In fact, the prior project at the related Beal site says very clearly the proponent will provide approximately fifteen thousand square feet of basement-free civic cultural space within the project site. This project presented to the public in multiple presentations, the proponent will provide approximately eight thousand square feet of civic cultural space within the ground floor of the project. The proponent presented to you today, it said, on the ground floor FPA space, eight thousand square feet will be dedicated to civic sculptural cultural space within the ground floor of the project. The actual legalese that was approved by BPDA with this project varies from every single chapter ninety-one project I'm familiar with. It says, the proposed project has committed to dedicate eight thousand square feet of the ground floor FPA space to civic cultural uses. The word commitment is not an obligation, and I have experienced with this before. We've lost over a hundred thousand square feet of cultural space in the seaport to developers who bought flip projects and then claimed the civic cultural uses were notional. So I expect we'll see with this proponent, maybe ten years of commitment, and then a future landowner will claim it's notional, it will disappear. Again, I've been through this. Is my time over?
No, thirty more seconds.
Okay, and with respect to the storage of dragon boats, this proponent did the same thing. They wrote up to six dragon boat storage in the garage, not six. Six is what they claim to be PDA board, and that's what they claim the community. Yet the garage has an optional commitment of anywhere from one to six, a storage for one to six dragon boats. These are very serious, serious misrepresentations, so I will continue my arguments to DEP. Thanks for your time, everyone.
Steve. Thank you.
I have no more questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. At that point, at this point, we'll close out that portion of the hearing, enter our business session. Questions, comments from the commission? Accept motions. Anybody?
Trying to open up my agenda.
Just keep on checking.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Seventh Amendment to the Master Plan for the Plan Development Area Number sixty-nine to Hundred Acres, Development Plan for two thirty-two A Street within Plan Development Area Number sixty-nine, the Hundred Acres.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion on the motion? There are none, we'll do a roll call. Michael Nichols?
Yes.
Nelson Royal?
Yes.
David Ma?
Yes, with just barely enough power left to make my vote.
Drew Left?
Yes.
Aisha Miller?
Yes.
Mike Burns?
Yep, yes.
And I vote yes, so that's seven, seven zero. Congratulations, good luck. Congratulations, good luck.
All very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Jeff, next meeting, July seventeenth?
July seventeenth. I think there's only one thing going to our board tomorrow, uh, that's going to be up for, uh. That will be new for you guys on the seventeenth, and then we will handle the one eighty western half as well that day, so two items, looks like. All right.
Everyone has a safe Fourth of July and. See you on the seventeenth.
Thank you, you too.